Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is 7 o'clock. It is September 7th. Welcome to the meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. And at this point, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll. Siana, can you hear us?
Yes, Chairman of the meeting.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord is excused. Mayor Bigson?
Here.
Councilmember Steve Stage is excused. Clark Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Gaffin is excused. Commissioner Hauser?
Here.
Commissioner King?
Here.
Commissioner Stone is excused.
Okay, we have a quorum, and we're able to proceed. So please join me at this point, and we'll recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Just to repeat a few things, this is considered to be a virtual planning commission meeting. And you may have noticed that some of us are not here present in the room, but we're available by Zoom. For the members of the general public who are watching on community TV, you'll see a phone number at the bottom. When an item comes up and you have something you would like to say or information you think the commissioners should know, excuse me, please call that number and you'll receive, you'll be connected with Siana, our clerk for the evening. And at the appropriate time, she will page you in or patch you in, and you'll be able to speak to us directly. The other thing is there's some impending weather, and I think we'll be here for a while. But if you hear a lot of noise in the background, you know that the impending weather isn't out here. At this point, number three, public comment. Does anyone here have any comments on anything on the agenda or not on the agenda? Siana, do you have any communications from anyone or anyone waiting to speak to us?
I do have written public comments that came in from Mr. Isaac Shepherd. He is at 1054 Point Place Boulevard. He stated that he is in favor of the application submitted by PAR. They have been very responsible neighbors, and he lives right across from Parkdale, and they're right from behind their backyard.
Could you repeat?
So he is in favor of the PAR.
Repeat his name and address for us.
Yes, it's 1054 Point Place Boulevard.
Okay. Very good. Anything else?
I do not have anything else at this time.
Okay, thank you, Siana. All right, at this point, we will consider for approval to meetings minutes from 1st August 2nd, 2021. And if the commissioners have all had an opportunity to review them, we would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by the mayor, support.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Hauser. Any other discussion? The roll call, please.
Mayor Bigson?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you. And then the meeting minutes of August 19th, 2021. Do we have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Moved again by the mayor, supported by Mr. Hauser. Any other discussion on those minutes? The roll call, please.
Mayor Bigson?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, and this is scheduled for a public hearing tonight, 5A, public hearing for the consideration of a special exception and accompanying site plan to permit a recreational use within the I-1 zoning classification for the Rochester School of Martial Arts located at 112 East Second Street. Vidia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the city's request, we have conducted a review of the Rochester School of Martial Arts for them to occupy floor space within an existing building. The site is located on the south side of Second Street, east of Main, within the industrial I-1 district. The planning commission is familiar with this site. A couple of years ago, this was the site where Game Changers is located. There is an existing 20,000-square-foot L-shaped building, and it's occupied by four different tenants. At this time, the martial arts studio is occupying the space that was previously occupied by Club Educate. The use is permitted, subject to special exception approval, in the I-1 district. With regard to vehicle access, I will share the site plan on my screen so everybody can see it. Can everybody see the site plan?
Yes.
Okay. In 2018, when the site plan was approved for Game Changers, at the time, the parking lot layout here was revised in order to show 90-degree parking. The one-way parking layout did not work. So the site plan that was approved by the planning commission required 90-degree striping because there was enough aisle width to permit two-way movement of vehicles. However, it appears that the striping was never done. As was shown on the approved site plan, the satellite image that is in your site plan review letter was taken on July 4th. It's from a software called NearMap, and it shows the site still laid out in this manner. This access stripe is intended for two-way movement of vehicles. With 90-degree striping, there is ample room to make this also a two-way aisle. So our recommendation is that the parking lot be striped as it was previously approved in 2018. With regard to pedestrian access, there is an existing sidewalk along the north side of the Second Street. At the previous meeting, the applicant was asked to show the barrier-free route to their unit, and this hand-drawn, black dashed line shows the barrier-free accessible route from the handicap accessible spaces to the martial arts studio. With regard to off-street parking, based upon the four different uses on the site and the standards for an office, a dance studio, and a recreational community center being applied, the total number of spaces required for the site is 68. The site plan shows a total of 59 spaces, which is a shortfall of nine spaces. When the planning commission reviewed this proposal in 2018, the requirement was 69 spaces, and the shortfall at the time was 10 spaces. The planning commission did grant a deviation for the 10-space shortfall. At this time, the shortfall is nine spaces. It's still within the limit that was previously approved by the planning commission, so we believe the approval previously granted can be held over for this proposal, too. To our knowledge, the city has not received any complaints about parking being an issue on the site. As to landscaping, the site has a 20-foot white greenbelt along the East Second Street frontage, and there is also a greenbelt along the site. Previously, the plan proposed addition of a few trees and shrubs in this area and replacement of the dead vegetation here, and the addition of automatic sprinkler systems. We are not sure if this was done, since the parking lot apparently was not done. I'm not sure whether the landscaping was implemented. We need confirmation from the city if this has been done. If not, it should be implemented as was previously approved. There is no change proposed to the trash enclosure, which is on the southeast corner of the site, and shed. There is an existing light pole along the site's frontage, and there are wall-mounted fixtures on the building which provide lighting. The building architecture is precast concrete panels in white and has got a dark-colored standing seam metal roof, and there are blue accents on the building. The building is in good condition, and no changes are proposed at this time. There is no ground or monument signs proposed. At this time, individual tenants have wall-mounted signage, and the signage is typically submitted to city administration for approval prior to installation. The proposal is a change of tenant space. It is before the planning commission because it's a special exception use, so no engineering review or approval is required at this time. Based on our review, it is our recommendation that the planning commission grant site plan and special exception approval to Rochester Martial Arts Studio to be located at 112 East Second Street, subject to two conditions: restriping of the parking lot at a 90-degree angle as shown on the site plan submitted in 2018, and confirmation that the landscaping previously approved was installed. Since it appears that the plan was not complied with in the last three years, it would be our recommendation that an occupancy permit not be issued until these two issues are addressed, and that will ensure that the site plan is implemented. I would be happy to answer any questions in my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vidia. Any questions for the planner from the commissioners?
Is this plan, the 2018 one, that we received with the landscape, is that the landscape plan?
Vidia?
It is the previous plan from 2018, but not the approved copy of the plan, because the approved copy of the plan actually had 90-degree parking shown on it. This was the first version of the 2018 plan.
So do we know what the landscape is for the 2018 plan?
Yes, I believe the city should have it on file. The applicant just submitted an older copy of the site plan. The approved plan in 2018 does show all the landscaping and details. We have it on file at the city, so we should be able to give the applicant clear directions in what was previously approved.
I don't know if the tech room can hear us, but we could use some volume in here.
Can Vidia turn hers up, maybe?
Vidia tried turning yours up, but I think you're probably not the problem.
Can you hear me now? I turned it up to 100.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's out. It's out.
Okay.
It came out of the woodwork. Okay, any question, any other questions for Vidia? All right, at this point...
Yeah, just a quick question to the commissioner, is the chairman. The restriping of the parking lot and the confirmation that the landscaping previously be approved was actually installed, are those conditions that would be placed on the owner or the landlord of the building and not necessarily the proposed tenant?
Typically, it is the, we do not get into who is actually going to do the implementation because that is between the lesser and the less C of the property, depending upon the arrangement the landlord has with the tenant about who is going to put in the improvements. However, at the time, Game Changers was approved. I believe it was the owner of the property who agreed to make those improvements.
Okay.
So one of the two parties will have to go ahead and get it done.
Right. My only concern is, I believe at the last hearing, the gentleman who is currently in that facility had stated that his lease was coming to an end, and I don't know how long it's going to take for one and two, and I'm just sensitive to, I don't want to hurt the tenant because of a landlord issue, you know? And so if there's something that we can do to make sure that it gets done, but at the same time not prejudice the tenant, that's, I'm just thinking out loud here a little bit.
Nick, I don't know if you can hear us, but that would be, that would be probably a question for you, whether or not you can make sure that this building is in compliance with the 2018 site plan approval.
Yes, yes, hi, everybody. For sure, we will do that. Before they get a CMO, we can do that. It is on the building owner, and we don't want to hold the hostage. I'm sorry, hold the, not hostage, but it's got to get done properly. So Vidia had brought that up to me before, so we will make sure the striping, landscaping, everything is compliant, for whatever reason, if it's not, which it sounds like it's not. So, and then one little piece, Housekeep guys, Attorney Crotte just texted me, do we have Sarah off? When we called the roll, she should have said her name, where she's located, and then, I'm not at the meeting for medical reasons. You don't have to say why, but you have to just say those words so that we're legal with our...
Okay, we'll take care of that in a minute. Thank you for reminding us.
Christian. I'm sorry, another question. Is it, I don't know who's here, who's not, if someone from the owner representative would be able to identify the answers to one and two, but more importantly...
You have to come up to the mic.
The timeframe that that work would be done.
And your name and address, please?
My name is Jim Wilson, 8920 Clare Region Clarkson. We're the owner of the building.
Okay.
And I, do you want...
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay. You've obviously heard the discussion that took place this evening, Mr. Wilson?
I couldn't hear it because I've been going through cancer, so I can't hear, and I...
Okay, I'm sorry, but let me, let me see if I can articulate what the issues are. Okay. So the first issue that the engineer has is whether or not the restriping of the parking lot has been completed. It's still in an angle, right?
Right, it's still on an angle. We did the rear of the building back prior to I got cancer. We had it repaved and striped back there. So we're in the process, H&amp;D seal coating out of Waterford, supposed to next week do the, the front and change it back to the perpendicular striping.
Okay, so you have an agreement in place with a contractor who's to come out next week and do this work?
Correct. We're doing our manhole first where the, at the bottom, then they'll come in and seal coat and stripe.
Okay. And then the second issue is that there's some landscaping that was previously approved or needed to be done in 2018, and we need to know if that has been done. Do you know...
That was done back when we were at that meeting. But since then, the dance studio, they're wanting us to redo the front of their spot, too, so we're going to change that for them.
Okay, so two quick questions. What was the work that was done in 2000?
Changed, changed.
Let me answer the, let me ask a question. What was the work that was done in 2018 that was part of your agreement?
The, the back of the building where Game Changer is, that was all repaved and striped back there.
Okay.
And then the landscaping, the plants that they came out and said were, had died, were changed at that time in the front of the building.
Okay, and your expectation is you're going to do additional landscaping work in the front of the building by the dance studio, right?
Correct.
And when do you expect that to take place?
Hopefully here in the next 30 days, while they're permitting, and everything works well, the contractor's coming out.
Okay, and do you have a contractor selected yet or no?
Correct.
You, no, do you or do you not?
We do.
Okay, and what's the name of that contractor?
Pro landscaping that does all of our lawn and does our snow plowing, supposed to help us out on that.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't have any further questions. Thank you, Commissioner.
So it would be appropriate to leave that condition in as requested by the planner?
Yeah.
Patty, did you have a question?
Well, to, to questions, or to Commissioner Hauser's point, is this going, is this going to put a problem to the...
I think the issue would be the tenant and the landlord. The landlord's put it on the record that he's willing to do the work, and the tenant is going to have to ensure in the process of paying rent, et cetera, et cetera, that it gets done, that it, that they can get a permit to occupy it, use it.
One final question, and I don't know the process or procedure, maybe Nick could opine on this. Is it possible to give a conditional certificate of occupancy on the condition that these two items are taking place or are resolved in the next 60 days or something?
We wouldn't be given a conditional approval. We would give our approval, but then it'd be up to the staff...
Right, that's what I was getting at.
...to make sure that they enforce...
Okay.
...the motion.
All right.
Chairman McGee?
Yes.
If I may just interject. The recommendation was in no way intended to prevent the tenant from moving into this building. I do understand he needs to vacate his tenant space that is on Main Street. I would be perfectly comfortable if the planning commission said that approval is granted, subject to these two items being addressed within the next 30 or 45 days. That is also perfectly acceptable. We don't want to put the tenant in a position of having nowhere to go. I'm fine with that, too.
Sir?
I'm here.
Do you have any comment?
You have to come up here.
Have to come over to the mic, yeah. Sorry, we gotta, we gotta get you on tape.
I understand. Good evening. My name is Joe Rogowski, and I'm an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Donahue, who is the proprietor of the School of Martial Arts. And I guess I'll just jump to the, the issue that we're talking about right now instead of my, my prepaid, pre-planned statement. The main concern we had, because I just saw that letter about the, the striping and the, whatever the landscaping requirements were today, because I don't think it was raised at August 2nd meeting, and I just wanted to make sure, and I think you've answered it, that, because he doesn't need, he needs a home to go to, and we just want to make sure he can, he can, if you guys approve, you know, if there's not something else at issue, of course...
You'll just have to keep the pressure on the landlord to deliver.
Okay, all right.
And we're going to rely on the city administration to make sure that occurs.
So the process would be, if you approve, and I'm here to answer any other questions, I'm not presuming that, that he could move in, start occupying and running his classes, and then if, and then the, the property owner would then report to the city that, yes, here's my proof that we've done the striping, and here's the landscaping we've done, and then...
That's pretty much it.
Never the two shall meet therapy.
Okay.
And it's, you know, I got a great thing to say, but I'm happy to say that...
You're doing fine right now.
And I think, you don't have to say that. I learned from, I learned from judges in the past, Rogowski, you're winning. Stop talking. Thank you. Less is more.
Okay, thank you. Now, this item is scheduled for a public hearing tonight, and we're going to consider the public hearing opened at 7:20, and I'm going to ask if there are any members of the public who have any comments or information that we should know about this item before we vote on it. And I'm going to ask Siana if you have any written or electronic communication from anyone who wishes to speak.
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll consider the public hearing closed at 7:21, and we're back at the table for the commissioners.
Do we need to get Sarah sworn in before the vote?
Oh, yeah. Oh, let's do that. Sarah, you have to make that comment that you heard from Nick.
Yes, before we go ahead and vote, I just want to let you know that I am remote this evening on joining the planning commission meeting on Zoom for medical purposes. That way, my vote will be counted.
Thank you. Hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you zooming. Okay, Beck?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Nick.
Um, just for, I think we should do this for the record. So about a week ago, the veterinarian, and Siana can read his name, had a concern, he put in an email to us, he had a concern with the parking situation potentially with the new tenant. We had a tenant go over today, actually. They worked out, we got an email back saying, "I'm good, don't worry about it, I'm not even going to show up for the meeting." But he did officially submit something, but then told us that, "Don't worry about it by putting it in the packet, I'm not going to show up for the meeting." Now he's cleared it. So I just want to go on the record that we had received correspondence from the veterinarian.
Yes, his name is Tim Duncan at the Oakland Animal Hospital located at 180 East Second Street.
And that he has now been satisfied with his concerns about parks.
So it asks that all of those communications be put into the record for this matter?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, back to you. The planner has made a recommendation to us on how to proceed, and I would ask if anyone wants to take a run at it.
I will make a motion that we grant site plan approval with the two conditions noted by Vidia that need to be completed within the next 45 days.
Very good. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Hauser? Any other discussion on this motion?
Yeah.
Chairman McGee?
Mr. Mayor?
So did Vidia have something?
Vidia?
Yes. Would you please make sure the motion includes site plan and special exception approval? They are there before you tonight for both of those.
So Sarah and Christian, are you okay with that, being in the language of the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I will support this and agree with what was said. You know, my, my only hesitation is, you know, they didn't do it last time, so there's really nothing that, besides, you know, the goodwill that he says he's going to come in and do it. And, you know, this is the problem when we say we let things go, and then we're going to do it afterwards. Well, you know, who, who really checks up on it? Do they really do it? I mean, I just think that's something that we need to, you know, be mindful of, because, yeah, you know, this might get done, it might not.
Right.
And then we've, you know, in, in theory, I guess we've lost our leverage to get it done with this tenant, not that that's what we're looking for, but so that's, it's just something that...
Good point.
...we need to make sure that...
Nick, are they currently in this building, operating?
They are not. I would, I agree with the mayor, and what I would propose is that we post a bond equal to the work that needs to be done, and then we'll give them back the bond once they do it. After 40 days or 45 days, whatever's the motion, then we will cash the bond in if we have to. But that's the safest way to block it. It's either that we won't give them a CMO until it's done, but if they, you all agreed to, I think you said 45 days, then we want a bond posted for the landscape work and the striping. And Jim can tell us what that amount is, do the contracts, and then we'll give them back the bond money. That assures the fact that we can get it done.
Should we add that? Should we add that to our motion?
Please.
Okay. Any amount, $20,000, something like that?
Mr. Commissioner, if it's, I was going to see if he would, because he said his contracts are ready, maybe he could opine as to what the value of those agreements are.
I don't know, can, do you have any idea, sir, what?
The cost.
Well, the seal coating is probably going to be about $5,000, and the landscape is probably another $2,500, so $2,500.
$10,000 would be okay.
$10,000. So Sarah, back to you. Would you amend your motion to add the language that a bond in the amount of $10,000 be posted to ensure that the work is completed?
Yes.
And Christian?
Second.
Okay.
Support.
Mr. Mayor?
And, and again, I don't, I, I'm not saying you, you're not going to do it. I'm, I'm sure, I'm, I'm just saying this more in general. And again, I'm sorry for your health issues and stuff, but...
The only way it won't get done is you have the money to do it if I don't make it through the next month to my grievance.
Well, we, we don't want to, we don't want to think at that. We, we hope you're going to make it. So I just, and again, it's not personal, this is just more kind of...
No, that's no problem. You'll have it tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
So we have a motion that has been supported on this, on this item, and I'd ask the clerk to call the roll. Yes.
Mayor Bigson?
Yes.
Commissioners Clark Martin?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
And King?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, and good luck to all of you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item 5B, public hearing for the consideration of a site plan to build an inspection, packaging, and warehouse building for PAR Pharmaceutical located at 870 Parkdale Road. Vidia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have conducted a review of a request from PAR Pharmaceuticals to build a 90,160-square-foot warehouse and packaging building on their existing campus. The site you're all familiar with is on the south side of Parkdale, just east of Cedarbrook Living Center, Cedarbrook Senior Living Center. The site has a total area of 71.18 acres and is zoned RP, which is Research Park. Now, the proposed use is a principal permitted use in the Research Park District. The proposed structure that they are building, I will pull up the site plan on the sheet for the planning commission to see. This is the warehouse boundary. If you look, this is geographic north. This is the OPC on this side. And to the northwest would be the Cedarbrook Living, Senior Living. To your east is Pfizer. So the proposed building complies with all of the setback requirements for the district, and the building also is well within the maximum permitted height limit of 50 feet for the district. The proposed building height varies between 21 feet 7 inches and 32 feet 1 inch. With regard to vehicle access, the site has got access of Parkdale Road, which remains unchanged, and there is a whole network of access drives through the site, all of which lead to the various buildings in what they term as their campus. Now, this is the main drive aisle that is actually coming through to this new area, and this drive aisle is going out over here. We had previously asked for truck circulation diagrams, and the applicant's truck circulation diagrams shows maneuvering all the way to the rear of the building where the loading docks are present for the warehouse, and this route that you see on the west side of the building and through the parking lot is for fire trucks. And the turn movements provided appear to be comprehensive and adequate. The applicant had previously said that the number of deliveries and pickups from the site will average three to five trips from the site per day. That's what it currently is, and they don't anticipate it changing. This warehouse building is not adding any new jobs, it is just relocating 70 jobs on the site to the new building. It's just Par's restructuring of their existing operations. The plan proposes no new sidewalks on the site. Per the applicant, building is operationally, I'm quoting this, operationally isolated from the rest of the buildings, and pedestrian traffic is not encouraged. The only sidewalk you see over here is on the north side of the building, which connects to an outdoor patio area, and this is where all the employees will be parked. The width of the sidewalk and its limits need to be clearly defined and labeled on the site plan. The applicant also submitted a covered letter with this revised plan, which says crosswalks, necessary crosswalks will be striped, but these crosswalks are not shown on the plan. We would actually like to see what the applicant considers as necessary, because we want to make sure that there is adequate room for the employees to actually cross in into the site and out of the site while maintaining safety in the truck circulation areas. Based upon the ordinance standards for parking, the site with the building requires a total of 93 parking spaces. The site plan provides a total of 111 spaces, including five handicap accessible spaces. All of the spaces meet the ordinance requirements for minimum dimensions, and the aisles are also 24 feet wide as required. Now, the ordinance requires all paved areas to be concrete curb. If you look at the site plan in front of you, there is concrete curving shown around the landscape islands. It's shown around the employee parking area until the west. The curbing terminates over here, and all this is uncurbed paved area. Per the applicant's response, I quote, "We are not going to show additional curb, but rather stick with the existing campus character as commented," close quotes. Now, the Par campus was built over the years, buildings had been added over the years. It is likely the requirement for concrete curving was not there when the original buildings were constructed. However, it is the ordinance requirement at this time. It's not an option for the applicant to decide whether they want to comply with it or not. When there is a requirement in the ordinance for curving, curbing must be provided unless there is some overwhelming engineering concern. And on this site, there is no such concern, because we have reviewed the letter from AEW, the city's engineer. So our recommendation continues. Concrete curving must be provided at the edge of all paved areas. This will probably set a new character for the Par campus, and in the future, when you see areas such as this building shown, they can continue the concrete curving and make the site more in compliance to the ordinance standards. With regard to architecture, the building applicant has provided elevations for all facades of the building. I'm going to scroll to the architectural elevations. Give me a second. These are the elevations for the building. The building is constructed of split face block and standing seam metal. The north facade, which is the office area, this is your office area, which is the north facade, has got one set of doors and windows, presumably for the office areas, and another set of doors. The rest of it is all the warehouse area, which just has this narrow band of windows shown here. The plan also proposes, this is the south side of the building with the overhead doors. The plan also includes an outdoor patio area on the northwest corner of the building with tables, chairs, and umbrellas for employee use. That area is to be fenced with a metal fence to separate it from the circulation drive. We had recommended that the applicant present building material colors and samples before you tonight to show what the building will look like. The color rendering shows it as light brown color block with gray metal panels and black metal awnings. Now, if you look at the overall site plan, I will scroll back to the main overall site layout, which we had requested the applicant to provide. This is the overall site layout. This is Parkdale Road. The proposed warehouse building is located significantly on the south end of the site, and is not going to be visible from Parkdale Road at all. However, the building, as I previously mentioned, is right next to the OPC building site. At the last planning commission meeting, there was discussion on the proximity of the building to the OPC site and building to the west. We had asked the applicant to present a line of sight diagrams or 3D imaging to show what this building is going to look at from the OPC parking lot. Even though it might be a parking lot, the OPC is a landmark facility in the city of Rochester that caters not just to the seniors in the city, but also of all the surrounding areas. The applicant has submitted two colored renderings in response to that request. I will go to those. This is the aerial drawing that was submitted, and honestly, I have no clue what this exactly represents. This is neither a line of sight diagram, nor is it to scale. I have no idea what this building is.
Mr. Chairman, that's the, that's the historic barn?
Yes.
That came with the property? So I assume it would be on the other side of that barn.
And then the vacant area we see in front is where Cedarbrook is now, Nick?
Yes, this is where Cedarbrook is, and my guess is this warehouse is going to be over here to the west of the OPC building. They are saving these trees, so I'm assuming it will be approximately here. But this is an aerial image, and this is a Google Earth street view with directions, nothing is labeled, so it's a little difficult for us to figure out what exactly is going on over here. The intent of the diagram was only to give the planning commission the ability to gauge what the impact of the building. We do understand from Parkdale, there is going to be literally no difference. We also acknowledge that this is an industrial warehouse building, and use of metal, standing seam metal panels and split face block is standard for warehouse buildings. However, I do have a couple of clients where warehouse buildings are the norm, including 600,000 square foot warehouse buildings, and any facade that actually faces other sites is provided with some amount of architectural detail, even in the block itself, even if it just involves a color banding or some faux accents, which would actually not make it look so imposing when looked at from the upcoming site. We also require clarification.
Leave that up for just a minute. I want the commissioners to leave the bottom one up and in focus. I want you to see the roadways that permeate this site. There are several of them. And this is what the, you're going to hear about this later, but this is what the petitioner is talking about. None of these roads are curbed, and you can see it here when they talk about the campus environment. And they don't want to, they don't want to get into having a curb now. I'm not sure when that first building was built that they're still occupying, but I think it was before 1910, just to give you some perspective on how, how long this campus has been here. It was Park Davis to begin with. So just, this points out fairly clearly why they don't want to be, I mean, it's, right now, it's a very open, flowing campus. There's no curbing where the, the asphalt paving, which is all in good condition from what I saw, but it butts right up to the grass. So you can, you can see, we're going to face this later on the next item on the agenda as well, where we have some historic issues that we have to consider when moving forward with the site plan in 2021. So I just wanted to point that out. Sorry, Vidya, I just wanted to inject that while it was showing.
No problem, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also reoriented myself, this is the Cedarbrook, this is another industrial development. My apologies, this is the OPC, and this is the proposed location of the warehouse, not here. This is the entrance of the site, so from Parkdale, it is at a significant distance, going to have no impact. The concern was, what will it look like from here? And line of sight diagram means we would actually have a site of diagram standing here, looking out to the east. That is what would be a true line of sight diagram. We also wanted clarification if there's going to be any rooftop mechanical equipment. The building height appears to be the lowest on the west side. Actually, the site that is facing OPC is the one that is at 21 feet 7 inches. The side near the warehouse docks is actually taller, so not sure if the units will be placed so far back on the building roof that it's not going to be visible. If that is the case, the applicant needs to actually clarify that. The plan does not propose any signage at this time. Detailed photometric plan has been provided, and it shows wall-mounted lights on the building and light poles within the parking lot. The parking lot light poles have a height of 20 feet, which is within ordinance limits. With regard to landscaping and tree removal, the ordinance requires certain amount of tree preservation. If tree preservation is not met, replacement is required for all regulated trees to be removed. The tree survey that is listed on sheet L1 states that 27 trees were surveyed, of which 21 trees are to be removed. A total of 67 replacement trees are being provided based on the caliber of replacement trees required. It's not clear at this time whether any of the trees that they're proposing for removal are in fact landmark trees. Per the applicant's response letter, existing trees on the site will be identified by the Par Arboretum and Tree Inventory List submitted to the City Forester for review. Now, the landmark trees are designated not just by species under the Rochester City Code of Ordinances. Landmark trees can also be based just upon their size. Anything that is 24 inches or greater is considered as a landmark tree. So the city forester will determine whether any of these are landmark trees, and if they happen to be landmark trees, their removal needs to be approved by city council. The applicant has provided a landscape plan that shows deciduous trees in parking lots and additional trees along the west and south property lines. The zoning ordinance does not have specific landscaping requirements for the RP district, and what the applicant is providing appears to provide some visual relief along the west side and within the parking lot. There is a trash compactor proposed on the southeast corner of the building, just west of the docks, instead of a regular dumpster. And the applicant has clarified that they will contract with a regular trash removal company for cleanup of the compactor, which I'm assuming since it's a restricted site and has got pharmaceuticals, they have their own contracts. Finally, a sustainability evaluation. As a new build, the project is subject to the city's sustainability evaluation criteria worksheet. A few months ago, the planning commission made a recommendation on the revised sustainability worksheet to the city council, which was subsequently adopted as policy. Now, this sustainability worksheet is not binding. However, it is a policy document that encourages property owners and applicants to design sites that are better based on the 20 indicators included in the sustainability criteria. It's not a measure to approve or deny a project, but it's definitely a measure for how much a proposed project is close towards the goals of the city's sustainable future. Based upon the self-evaluation scoring that the applicant provided, many of the criteria had no responses or no explanations given. Based on the information provided, the project scored 4.5 points out of a total of 20, which places it in the non-sustainable category. Based on our review at this time, there are many major issues that still need to be resolved. So it would be our recommendation that the planning commission direct the applicant to make revisions to the plans, to comply with the requirements that are noted in our August 27 review letter, and resubmit for consideration of site plan approval. While the applicant might not be able to revise the plan to get it into the sustainable project scoring criteria, which would be 16 to 20 points, there are several categories in which provision of additional information would be enough for the applicant to be able to score points, and there is definitely room and scope for some improvement. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Vidya, for a thorough review. And commissioners, you have questions for Vidya?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So with respect to the sustainability worksheet here, as you guys have heard, I was part of the group that came up with this, and I certainly recognize the importance and significance of it. But is there a situation where this might not be applicable, or it should be given the weight that we think it deserves based on the nature of this particular development? I understand that this is an important document and a program, but this site, isn't it, it's contained, right? It's a, there's a fence, there's barbed wire, it's a very secured area. So to the extent that points are not going to be available for, you know, use as a public space, et cetera, I don't know how applicable this document is. And I'd rather the applicant focus more on the issues that were recommended by the, by the engineering office, to get those up to par versus so much spinning the wheels on this, the sustainability review. And those are just my out loud comments.
I think we have a duty to ensure that the sustainability tool is filled out.
Sure.
What I saw in here, and I expressed it to the staff this afternoon, is that the tool's in here, but it looks like it just simply was not completed.
I agree.
There are many of those items that could be point value, and I would just like somebody from Par to take the time to go through it, genuinely, go through it with Nick and Vidya, and complete it. For the record, that we know, we have the assurance that they've done everything they can in order to support sustainability within the city. It's not necessarily asking them to do anything.
Right.
It's really a matter of filling out the tool and, and complying like we have asked. Since the tool came into place, we've asked virtually every project promoter or director to go through the process.
I don't think that's an unreasonable ask, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think it would require a lot of man-hours or anything such as that. It's an old site. I mean, everything needs, everything that needs to be known about it is probably known. I would like to see them comply with that.
Not a problem.
Commissioner McGee?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I, I agree with what you said, but I thought the exact same thing you did.
I, I understand that in the scheme of things, it's not a big deal, but for the purposes of continuity and not being visited later by someone who says, well, you didn't make them do it, whatever the case may be, for a minimal amount of effort, I believe Par can comply.
Completely.
Vidya?
Yes, thank you, Chairman McGee. To address Commissioner Hauser's concern also, which is why I prefaced it by saying that mitigation score is not binding. This is not a reason to grant approval or deny a project. However, it is to encourage them. Commissioner Hauser brought up a point saying that some of these criteria might not even be available. That is exactly the reason why you adopted and amended worksheet. If you look, this project is not being scored for housing mix, housing affordability, workforce, historic preservation, business attraction. We are not expecting them to apply for any of those points. There are, however, that's why this is on, the previous sustainability evaluation was one point for each of the 20 indicators. For a building such as this, which is a non-residential use, which is an industrial use in a non-DDA impacted area, they are being subjected only to about 15 of the 20 criteria, and there are weighted scores. Some of them are just 0.5 points, some are 1, some are 1.5, some are 2 points. The applicant might still not make the sustainable score. However, like you said, additional information can be provided. Just as a comparison, we made reworked warehouse, which is on South Street, not in the DDA, a similar warehouse building that is gated and fenced off, go through the whole process. Even on the revised sustainability worksheet, they scored only 13 out of 20. However, it gave them an option to actually improve their sites. Their initial score was like 10, they made a few changes, added some landscaping, and they managed to get it to 13, which was really good. It took that one small extra step towards the city's sustainability goal. So the intent is not to use this as a tool to, you know, put a roadblock for Par, but to encourage Par, actually, it is an existing campus, but it's definitely possible to do slightly better towards the sustainability score by just answering the information or maybe adding a little bit to it.
Christian?
Yeah, if that's the case, and I completely understand, Vidya, thank you. If some of these are not applicable, then I would say the score ought to be out of 14, because I counted six that had the NA.
I think they could answer that when their time comes to speak to me.
Done, that's it, thank you.
Because many of those were just left blank, and there are answers for them.
Sure.
I mean, we could fill a lot of them in.
Of course, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the planner?
Mr. Chairman, it's Nick again. So as the forester, I visited the site, none of the trees qualify as landmark trees. Vidya's portrayal was correct, but I evaluated all of them, and none of them are, so we can check that box.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I, I assumed that was the case. I can picture them being old, diseased, late in their life, and probably exempt from being saved. Beck? Any other questions or comments for the planner?
Yes, this is Commissioner King. I have a couple of questions. Is it relates to the concrete curb along the edge of the paved areas? I do see, you know, quite a bit of it does show curbing, and then there are sections that do not. Is this all new concrete roads that are being laid? Or these, my understanding, I think, is much of this is existing roads throughout, correct? And then maybe the parking lot is new?
Actually, all of the new parking area, if I go to this, Commissioner King, all of this is new pavement. Everything that you see here is new pavement. So all of this that you see over here is new asphalt, new pavement. So curbing is proposed only along certain portions of it and not along others. So it's not existing paved areas that are being redone. Even if they're being redone, there is, there's really no logical reason for not having to go.
So point that out again, Vidya, I just found your pointer here. The new parking areas are all curbed?
Yeah, all of this is new pavement, including the building being built over here. So this entire area is going to be regraded in order to construct the building. Where you see this thick solid line, that represents the concrete curb. So you can see the solid line comes all the way along the west property line, and it stops right here. And all this does not have curbing. And this is the main truck circulation area. The concern is if your truck is going to back out and it climbs over this, you're going to be now in landscape area before you make this turn and leave. So when most of the, when curb is being laid out on one side, I'm not really sure why curb cannot be laid out on the other side to give it a complete finished appearance and comply with. with the ordinance?
Okay, that'll be a question for the petitioner when he comes up here.
So then my, my other question for you, Vidya, I know we've asked for line of site diagrams from the OPC, but I understand that this building is, you know, set quite far back on the property, and I do think it, it does back near towards the Clinton River Trail. Do we have an idea of how it will look from the trail? Does this create any gaps in the tree coverage from the trail? Or is there enough, you know, forestry still behind it?
I believe there is adequate existing wooded area. This is a 71 acre site, so if the building is located over here, I think all of this tree cover is between them and the Clinton River Trail, which would be over here somewhere.
Nick, you would have walked this with the petitioner. Are you able to further clarify that? Is, are they going to remove the tree line that's along the fence, along the trail?
So, I'm sorry.
Vidya, this is Brian Kistner from PAR Pharmaceutical. Wanted me to answer that question?
Yeah, Brad.
So the, the exist, yeah, so welcome. This is Brian Kistner, Senior Director of Engineering Services from PAR Pharmaceutical. Also on the call is Paula Duff Papa, the General Manager of the facility. The existing tree line from the, from the Parkdale, or from the Clinton, from the trail system will remain intact. As a matter of fact, there's an elevation drop that the building will have little to no visibility from the actual trail itself. The drawing that's up on the, or this, this picture that's up on the drawing, you can see that whole tree line, just that cluster of trees, that is on a back, back down, Vidya, from the Cedar Brook, as you're looking down. The building's going to be in that vacant land, down just past the tree line. Nope, to the left, to the left, down in this area here, and on down into that vacant land. There were existing buildings there. So none of those trees will be impacted. Matter of fact, they'll provide a visibility barrier to the Cedar Brook attendance and into the, from Parkdale Road. So there's no plan to remove any of those trees on that hill.
Okay.
So the, the other, for those who are familiar with the OPC and the land that we donated about five years ago to the OPC and the historic barn, there's about a 70, 50 to 75 foot elevation drop when it comes down that hill. And I know that Renee and her team are looking to turn that in. If you go back to the next drawing up, it's not very, ooh, one more, right there. So it's not really shown on this drawing, because that was taken at the edge of their, of their parking lot, but go, there's this elevation drop to go down to that historic barn. I know she's looking to turn that, that particular parcel into some parking to try and address some of the parking constraints that the OPC has. So adjacent to that, so the highest point of our building from, from grade is about 31, 32 feet on grade, and it's, it's, now they're going to come to the top of that, that hill that's shown there. It'd be, it'd be good to, just to walk this property, and I would, I would encourage, I would set some times up that we can come out and actually to tour what we, what we're doing here. It's, there's existing buildings there that were demoed several years ago, and we're just now in the process of replacing.
Brian, just to clarify that, that's the easternmost curb on the parking lot of the OPC.
That is correct.
And then that historic building down there is also on the OPC property.
Correct.
And then your new building will be behind that, past that.
Correct.
So it's a long, long way from, from Letica Road.
Correct. That is correct.
And I don't know what the elevation drop is, but it's pretty substantial.
Yeah, it is.
The, the one question that came up while you're looking at this, if you're going to have HVAC equipment on the roof, is it going to be visible to the OPC people? And if it is, would you screen it?
Yeah, we, at this point in time, the design, we are not putting any HVAC equipment on the roof, as that adds additional structural support required. When we get into the packaging rooms that we needed to meet our FDA GNP practices of our facility to control temperature, humidity, and particulate within those rooms, the actual air handling equipment will be inside the building and sitting on top of these rooms that will be constructed.
Okay, so you're not putting any equipment on the roof of this structure?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We want to keep the, the roof lines clean and clear to avoid any potential future leaks and everything. The only equipment that will be sitting outside will be the, the air handling equipment for the packaging building, and that's going to sit adjacent to where the trash compactor is on the south side of the building. It'll be, it'll be blocked by the building and not visible from, from Parkdale and or from, from Letica.
And the other one is the, the issue of the curbing. So I think that would be along the east side and south side of the new structure.
Yeah, the, the curbing piece is, as you know, that our entire property, you know, when you look at the, the miles of driveway that we have, nothing has been, only a few areas have been curved to support runoff to a drain, to a storm sewer, to a storm drain with it. We haven't shown that in, you know, through a value engineering session is, is, that was adding additional cost to the actual project that we could go back and put it back in, but I would have to have that blessed by our senior executive team.
So you're proposing in that area to just keep the same open space that's been there for maybe a century?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and be honest, when we get into snow removal of that property during the winter time, we end up having to patch and repair curbs because of the snow plows and snow trucks and everything get into that. And it's just, the cost to, to continue to operate the facility would, would increase as well with the, the repair of the curbing systems.
And Vidya's final point, can you label the crosswalks appropriately on the final site plan?
We, we, we will, we will label the crosswalks where it will show the striping, where we will have the, what few pedestrians will be walking between buildings will be allowed to walk. We'll show that.
Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Vidya.
What would really help, Brian, is to, for line of site diagrams that I requested, the grade that you explained doesn't come out very clearly in this. I know people have visited the site, but for the purposes of records, what would help us, even if you do a flat two-dimensional cross-section, a slice of this site? So you could show Letica, you could show OPC, you could actually show the drop in grade and your building, and thereby justify the fact that there is no way it's going to be seen from Letica. It can be a two-dimensional slice, like a cross-section across this area that will show the grade drop, and thereby demonstrate the need for not having any changes proposed or that the building will not.
Brian, could you have your architect do that?
We will, we will, we'll work to get that, that two-D line of site drawing for, for Vidya.
Thank you very much.
And the commission.
A final point I just wanted to make about curbing. I completely understand where Brian is coming from. However, as your planner, it is my duty to go by what the ordinance says, and granting a waiver from curbing, because it might be financially imposing for a company as big as PAR, would just set the foundation that you cannot require curbing for any other project in the future, because it would just not be fair.
Thank you.
So granting a waiver has to have substantial justification, and that substantial justification can only be engineering concerns. A site, because it was non-conforming, cannot continue to remain non-conforming in perpetuity. And I just want to make that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is going to have a similar item with the fence behind the community house. And I think we're prone to look at the historic nature of these sites when we make these decisions. I just, from my little bit of look into the history of the site for PAR, it looks like Park Davis bought it in 1905. Looks like they first put facilities up here in 1907. It's been functioning ever since. And still, some of those original buildings are on site. They've never curbed it, it's had that campus look. I'm sure there have been a lot of meetings with the Avon Township Planning Commission and the Rochester Village Planning Commission, and it's gone on years where it just has been left as it sits. And so when we come later on to the fence with the community center, I'm, I'm just not, myself personally speaking, I'm not inclined to require any more curbing than what's been.
I, I agree with that.
Okay.
Can, Mr. Chairman?
Sarah?
This is Commissioner King. Can the planner, Vidya, could you maybe help us understand what it is that the curbing does in areas where, you know, I understand in parking lots or up against buildings where we're trying to protect, you know, cars from maybe crossing into sidewalks when they're parking or, you know, pedestrian walkways and into buildings, but, you know, in, in instances like this, along the roadways inside this facility, what would be the purpose of the curbing? Is it aesthetics?
No, curbing is typically required to define the edges of pavement. It helps contain the pavement, and it prevents movement of vehicles onto landscape or green areas, especially in winter where you have no curbing, and if snow is piled up on the edges, you're not going to be able to see where the pavement ends. And it's very simple, I don't know if you have been to sites where there is no curbing, there are ruts in the property all the time, because it's, it's difficult to judge where the pavement ends and you're onto the landscape area before you know it. So that is the reason why curbing is required in, across all zoning ordinances. In fact, I've not seen a single zoning ordinance in my experience that actually waives curves. They do allow for modified curbs with weak holes, which means on sites where they, they ask for no curbing in order to allow for stormwater drainage, they provide holes in the curb so that the water can still sheet drain, but at the same time, you continue to have curbing. So that's the reason to require it. It's just good site design. Also, the way I read the zoning ordinance, curbing is a requirement. The other case that was referred to by Chairman McGee, where the fence is, fence is a flexible issue, where the planning commission has got the ability to grant deviation. I did not read the ordinance as planning commission having the ability to deviate from curbing unless it is for engineering reasons. And the letter from the engineer is requiring curbing too. So, thank you.
By the way, Nick, we did not get the engineering letter in this packet. We usually do, just pointed out. Brian, while you're there, the, the last item is the sustainability tool, which is near and dear to us, and I suspect you've heard about it from Nick, because Nick heard about it from me earlier today, and we, we ask your cooperation.
Absolutely, it is an important tool. We'll, we'll do whatever it takes to, to comply with that tool. We did it to the best of our ability when we first filled it out to try and answer the questions that, that applied to us. And, and I agree with the one gentleman's comment that instead of NA in it, we should maybe take full credit for those particular items, because it wouldn't apply. But sustainability is important, important to our site, important to our corporation, and to our core values. So we will do whatever it takes to complete that.
Thank you, we appreciate that very much.
Mr. Chairman, I think Renee Courtright has a question. Has her hand up.
Uh, let's see. Sianna, do you have a, someone with a question?
Renee, the chairman of the OPC.
Nick has something to say first.
Can I go first, Mr. Chairman, on the curving side?
Go ahead.
I'm not sure that the engineers understood the whole concept of that plan. The road, Letica Road, doesn't have a curb on it. The concept of PAR has always been sheet drain in the grass, keep it open, not busted up curbs for quarters of miles. I understand what Vidya's saying, don't disagree. But I'm in a condition saying, let the staff work with the engineers to find, to prove why we need curbing on site that hasn't been curbed in 100 years, just because the ordinance says that. Do we have to go to the zoning board? I'll write a, I'll write a case against the zoning board, but we didn't do that for the other additions that we put on. We never required this before, so I'm not sure why it came up this time, other than we are a little more thorough in our review, but I wouldn't get hung up on that.
If this was being built new, ground up, it would have to be curbed. We, I think we all understand that.
But we just did additions that were built from the ground up, we didn't curve it, so, but we'll, let the engineers, let us put the engineers on that.
Thank you. Renee Courtright, did you have some comments for us?
Yes, I do, thank you. This is actually the first time that I've seen anything about this particular building that will adjoin the property that Brian mentioned was bequeathed to OPC in 2016, which is 2.7 acres that would extend our parking lot, OPC's parking lot. And then from there, we would have quite a significant retaining wall. As mentioned, there is quite a drop from the top of the part, of the land down to the lower level, which includes a historic 1907 barn. The intention of the OPC is to renovate that historic barn and to have that as another opportunity to extend our programming at the center with the retaining wall and a road down to the barn. I really would like to see elevations of this building, as I, I was not familiar with this significant construction plan and addition to PAR's property. And it would be nice to have those elevations, so as we're standing at the top of our parking lot looking down, I mean, it's going to really dwarf the barn that's there. And anyway, I just would like to see a little bit more in regards to the drawings of this particular piece of property, and how close it is to the property that we own there.
Thank you very much for that comment. And Brian, you might want to repeat what you committed to earlier, that you're going to provide that particular line of site information to us.
Yeah, we will, we will provide a line of site drawing from the Letica curb, showing the, the elevation of the, of the building.
Okay, thank you. This is scheduled for a public hearing, so I'm going to put it in here at this point and consider the public hearing opened at 8:06 PM. And Sianna, I'm going to ask again if you have anyone waiting to speak to us, anyone else submit anything in writing to us that should be part of the record.
Other than the comment I made at the beginning of the meeting, that is the only comment that I have.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
You still doing the discussion on the community house?
Well, it's coming, so come and join us.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. All right, it is 8:08, we'll consider the public hearing held, and this matter is now back before the commissioners here at the, at the table for further discussion. We've covered a lot of material here tonight, but it's a significant, it's a significant facility, and...
So are we waiting for, Mr. Chairman, are we waiting for them to resubmit more information?
I don't think so. I think they've committed to doing it. I don't see a reason to, to hold it up from consideration. Then we will trust that Nick will assure that all commitments made are met.
But don't we need to see some of that before? I, I guess I will, I guess I'm unclear on that. Did we need, weren't we going to wait and see the, the site plan and things like that?
On a topographic...
Do we need that for our approval?
Chairman McGee?
Yes, who is that?
Sienna.
Oh, hi, Sienna.
We do have a meeting scheduled for September 23rd. If you all would like to wait until Mr. Kistner gets that information, you can place that on that agenda, that way they won't lose that much time.
So commissioners, what do you think? You want to, you want to give it one more round?
That would be my preference, frankly, to get some of this additional information, particularly the sustainability numbers and these line of site drawings. I think for my own particular reasons, it would be helpful to hold off a couple of weeks.
I, I would like to comment, though, that I, I think that just maintaining the integrity of the, of the site, the context, that I don't think that the curbing should be necessary, because it, it, do we have a, like a grandfather clause? I was searching for something.
Vidya doesn't seem to think so.
Because the integrity of the site, you know, you have this existing site that has a certain character.
Yes.
And then to change it, I don't...
That was precisely my thought.
I, I, I agree.
I agree with everything that has been said about the gutters, or I'm sorry, curbs.
Mr. Kratt, I wonder if, if you're with us, if you could look into that a little bit further, where the planning commission will be on sound ground in...
Chairman McGee? Chairman McGee?
Yes.
With regard to the curbing, I do have a lot of experience in non-conformities and the grandfather clause. I in fact conduct training sessions in that based on the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. It is, there is no grandfathering in for a historic state of a structure. Grandfathering in is a term that is used for existing buildings and structures that predate the zoning ordinance. So grandfathering in would be limited to the PAR site for their existing buildings. You couldn't go ahead and require curbing on all their existing rivals on the site because those predate the zoning ordinance or they're already in existence. You cannot stretch a grandfather clause to include new construction in perpetuity. As I previously stated, existing non-conformity is no justification for building new non-conformities. That said, it's up to the Planning Commission. If you want to grant a deviation from the curbing for the entire site, I'm fine with it. However, I will have to make a point of not requiring curbing on any site in the future. So.
Is Mr. Kratt online tonight?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now. You see our dilemma.
Okay. I do see your dilemma and I apologize you can't see me, but my power is out. The storm is coming your way. And I'm in my car trying to get my battery on my phone, so I'm, I'm, I'm here. So what Vidia's saying is correct. I think you wouldn't rely on a grandfathering issue for a new construction because, you know, you can't, if along those lines, you can't expand an existing non-conformity if that applied to begin with. So I think if, I think Vidia is probably right as far as if Planning Commission just doesn't feel that it's appropriate based on the site, then I think you just don't make it as one of the requirements. I mean, there is a requirement to have, you know, this is internal, internal driveways, drive paths that if you, if Planning Commission doesn't feel it appropriate to have this for this campus setting because none of the other areas do, then just you wouldn't make it a condition of approval.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you very much, sir.
Hi, hi. May I make a comment?
Who's that speaking?
This is Paula Del Papa. Hi, sorry, this is Paula Del Papa. I'm the interim general manager at PAR on the screen. I'm also on the phone line. I'm separately connected on the voice.
Welcome to our meeting.
The phone number.
Please speak.
Hi, hi. I share Brian's original comments, but I just wanted to add a comment on the historical element. On the back end of that property line where the wooded area is at, it's been, I'm a little bit concerned about the curving affecting the natural wild habitat that's beyond that by changing the water patterns and the flow of the water runoff from that parking area. But in general, I just want to add that, you know, we do take pride in the historic nature of our facility and the natural look of the environment. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of that. That's it.
Thank you very much, Paula. We appreciate the input. Christian.
Mr. Chairman, I am an advocate for what's being said about the requirement for the curbs. Does the applicant, if you know, have the ability to get a variance from the zoning board, for instance? Could they go to zoning and say, hey, I'd like to get relief from this mandate so we don't find ourselves in a position of saying, okay, it's fine, and then setting a precedent for future?
Sure, they do have that ability. I don't know if I see it in that category of importance myself, but sure, we could probably require that. But I'm not sure that the issue is such that we would want to pursue that.
I understand. I'm just trying to think of a middle ground here so we don't find ourselves in a pickle and look like we're setting ourselves up for future development and say, hey, well, you guys did it for them. I see that.
I know there is the black and the white of the ordinance. And, you know, we try to follow it as best we can, but the practical nature of what occurs on the street also has to be considered, and I think that's what we're trying to do here.
I get it. Thank you.
Chairman McGee?
Yes.
This is Sienna.
Yes, Sienna.
So in talking with Nick, I included the engineer review in the original. The first time that PAR went up, I did not include it again. However, we will talk with her and then she will be present at the next meeting to address the curbing we're used. That'll be better. So that way on the 23rd, she'll be there to address that and go over and actually go to the site and have a comment.
I couldn't get in here.
Sienna, we couldn't quite understand.
The engineer from A E W who wrote the original review.
Seal, seal, sorry.
She will be, she will look at the site again and talk with administration and then she will be present at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would go as far as, because I don't want Vidia to be put in that spot where she can't require for anybody else because we want, normal situations are on parking lots, etc., we would want curves obviously, but if we have to, we will take it to the zoning board and get that waived based on what the general manager said about changing water flows and we want water getting in a certain area. So I can write that case if we have to. I don't want Vidia to have that.
I think we don't want to pursue that if we're not required to.
If we're not required, that's fine.
And I hear from the attorney that we have ways that we can do this appropriately and not force that issue. So I think what we need, I did close the public hearing. We need a motion though to set this, public hearing's held, so just set it for site plan approval at the next available meeting, which is what, September 23rd?
September 23rd.
And then would you, whoever makes the motion, let's list the items that we expect to see presented that night. For example, the first would be the line of site drawings.
Do we table this or do we, how does that work? Because we had the public hearing.
Table it?
You could.
Mr. Chair, I would say you would table this discussion. You've already conducted the public hearing, but you're just tabling consideration until the September 23rd meeting.
So the motion would be to table to the September 23rd meeting with the following conditions. Somebody want to make that motion?
All right. I saw move that we table this site plan proposal till the September 23rd Planning Commission meeting with the following information being resubmitted. The labeling of the sidewalk and its width.
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks on the side of the building, the parking lot. Installation of concrete curb in all paved areas. No, okay. Strike that, please. The topographic elevation, like a cross section, so that we have an understanding of the view.
From Letica Road.
From Letica Road. And that was it.
That is it?
Oh, and the revised sustainability evaluation with explanation.
Oh, yes. Submission of the finalized sustainability tool.
Right.
Okay, are we okay with that?
Yes.
So it's been moved by Ms. Clark Martin. Do we have support?
Support.
Ordered by Christian Hauser. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioners Clark Martin?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
And King?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Brian and Pam. Thanks for your attendance tonight and patience and we will get you where you need to be here very soon.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. We'll take just a brief break here. I heard the rumble, but I didn't see any action, so maybe it slid past us here. Did it?
It did, yes.
Soon as the mayor returns, we'll pick up with the next item.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is 5C, public hearing for the consideration of a site plan to renovate and expand the existing Rochester Community House located at 816 Ludlow. Madam Planner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have reviewed a request from Jason Arlo on behalf of Rochester Community House to demolish a portion of an existing building and replace it with a larger addition. The site is located on the east side of Ludlow Avenue abutting the Pink Creek Trail and is zoned R2, which is one family residential district. The Rochester Community House is located on a larger parcel which is part of the municipal park along Pink Creek Trail. Community centers are permitted as a special exception use in the R2 district by the zoning ordinance. I will pull up the site plan for the Planning Commission to see. So the site has a single access drive off Ludlow that leads into a parking lot, all of which is going to remain unchanged at this time. There is an existing concrete sidewalk along the site's Ludlow front edge. While there is no direct sidewalk connection to the building, as I mentioned, it's part of the municipal park and there is a huge network of sidewalks that go along the Pink Creek Trail that keeps the building connected to the trail system. The plan does propose, I will go into a zoomed in version, the plan does propose a new sidewalk, favor and other pedestrian amenities in and around the proposed building addition. With regard to off-street parking, based on the ordinance standards for a cultural center, it's one space for each 500 square feet of gross floor area. Based on this standard, a total of 32 spaces are required. The parking lot has 97 spaces and five additional handicap parking spaces, all of which meet the ordinance's requirements and are compliant. With regard to loading space, the ordinance requires one 10-foot by 50-foot loading space. There is really no room on the rear of the building where typically we would strike a loading space, so the architect has striked it in the main drive aisle, which is acceptable. I'm sure the community house will regulate the times it receives deliveries in order to make sure that this does not become a source of conflict. But there is a designated space where if loading, unloading needs to take place, a truck can pull over into that area. With regard to landscaping, there is an extensive landscape plan in your packet which proposes the installation of numerous ornamental trees, perennial shrubs, evergreens, ornamental grasses along the foundation of the building. I will scroll if you can see over here, along the foundation of the building. In addition to it, there is a boulder terrace garden on the east side adjacent to the trail. The applicant, Mr. Smith, had presented in detail the elevations, which I'm sure he can present again tonight, which show a really attractive landscape around the proposed addition which enhances the community building. The, all landscape areas are to be provided with automatic irrigation excluding, of course, the boulder terrace garden. The plan does not include a landscape maintenance agreement, which is typical, but since it's part of the municipal park, I'm not sure if the community center takes care of its own landscaping or if the city does. We just need clarification to ensure that some party will be responsible for maintaining the landscaping. The plan includes a survey of 45 trees in the area of disturbance, of which 12 would be removed and six of them require replacement. Replacement calculations have been added for a total of 29 trees that is based on their caliber count of the trees being removed. Since this is part of a larger municipal park, the city has indicated that the required replacement trees will be planted in and around the municipal park at a later date as part of the larger part, tree planting plan. With regard to amenities, the plan proposes installation of furniture in the patio area. The applicant did include details of the type of furniture they are proposing and that was, this is the colored rendering from the east side of the building. The applicant did include, this is an aerial overview, showing the sidewalk and this, and this is the favor patio. The applicant did include details of white stackable plastic chairs in the package. I believe that some of the commissioners had a question about why the furniture was not in keeping with the beautiful architecture of the building and the applicant clarified that it is for ease of stacking and storage of the chairs. Now, if you look at the colored rendering, it shows these beautiful wrought iron and wood chairs which are more in keeping with the building design proposed. I'm sure it is right now not in the budget to spend on new patio furniture, but we would recommend that in the future, the applicant consider upgrading their patio furniture to something that looks like what is shown on the colored rendering because it is more attractive to the whole use as proposed. With regard to screening, the ordinance has got a specific requirement which says screen wall shall be installed along all lot lines of non-residential uses where the lot line adjoins a residential district. I'm going to pull up an aerial image of the site from a software called Near Map, which gives, which is actually showing you the image of the site as of, if I can open it up, as of July 4th of this year. So the ordinance does require screen wall along this area and along this area at the edge of it with, to screen the single-family homes from the proposed use. Now, currently there is no fencing. Some of the homes over here have their own fence line, some of them don't. This is a situation that has remained for a really long time and to our knowledge, at least from what we have heard from the city, it has not been an issue until such time. The ordinance does grant the Planning Commission the ability to deviate from this requirement, either modify it or waive it altogether. At the last meeting, the Planning Commission requested that the city send a letter to all of the abutting homeowners to inform them of the proposed project and the fact that the Planning Commission is considering a waiver from the fence requirement. The city will provide an update at tonight's meeting in regard to this matter. With regard to architecture, as I mentioned, the building is extremely attractive with the proposed addition. The applicant had previously explained how they are using field stone, historic field stone in order to create a chimney on the north side of the building and also the creation of a wall of windows on the east side to take advantage of the natural light given for basement area. As required at the last time, if any building material colors or samples could be presented at tonight's meeting, the Planning Commission will review it. There is no change proposed to parking lot lighting. Two new fixtures are proposed, one above each door on the north and on the east side of the building, and that's purely for safety purposes. There is an existing dumpster enclosure on the south side. It is located right here. At this time, that dumpster enclosure is structurally sound, but it does not meet the ordinance standards for a masonry enclosure with steel reinforced wooden gates. If ever the dumpster should be replaced in the future, the city will have to upgrade it to current ordinance standards. No new signage is proposed at this time. Based on our review of the plan submitted, it is our recommendation that the Planning Commission grant site plan and special exception approval for the proposed addition and site changes to the Rochester Community House, subject to four conditions. The city or applicant maintenance of all onsite landscaping. The city planting of 29 replacement trees within the municipal park at a later date in conjunction with a master planting plan. City update from homeowners on the screening waiver being requested. And finally, Planning Commission approve of proposed building materials and colors. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Vidia from the Commissioners? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, it's Nick again. I want to just add on to Vidia's report. At the last Planning Commission meeting, you all asked us to reach out to the adjacent property owners along Ludlow and the one on Wilcox to ask them three different options. So Blaine personally went out, hung up, put together a letter, I think it was in the packet and, oh, it wasn't there, I would put, sorry. You went out and on each door, put it out there and said either, here's what's going on and here's when the meeting is. There's a wall that would be required by ordinance, the Planning Commission has the right to waive it. Would you like a wall, no wall, or would you like a arboretum or a vegetation screen? Your choice or any combination thereof. We got zero responses until tonight. We got zero responses until today, and I don't know if Amy's in the room, I can't see her whole gamers there, but Amy is the young lady who lives at the end of Wilcox. She's lived there for a lot of years. So she's put up with and watched the development of the community house, the parking lot, the drainage issues that we've had in her backyard, et cetera. So she went and met with Alan and did a tour. Alan talked to her, and Alan and I came to the same agreement that we'll work with our DPW in the back, and she would request that we would put a row of arborvitae along her property line, because unfortunately for her over the years, the additions and all the activity is on the residential side, which is her side. She is deaf, but she can hear low-frequency emissions, and she hears the constant hum of the air conditioning units, the electrical box. When they empty the dumpsters, she hears that. It's, all those activities take place on her side. Alan had talked to her about taking the existing arborvitae on the site. We're going to relocate them and put them around the air conditioning units on the south side of the building, and then ultimately, we might try to move that dumpster location deeper away from her into the lot someplace down the line, not necessarily now, and she understands that. And then the row of arborvitae along that south property line, the tree fund can pay for those, because we'll make them eight feet inside, and that would be a great screen for noise and visually, so she doesn't have to see the cars, the lights, and it'll block some of the noise also. So we would agree with that. We would like that a condition on the site plan, that we create a landscape berm along the south property line, and we'll work with the drainage and all that good stuff to do. And that will go in next spring. That would be our recommendation.
Thank you. That's a very responsible approach. I think we are, you're ahead of us. We appreciate that very much. Any questions for either Vidya or Nick? Petitioner, come and join us, and I don't know if you have any updates, any further information from the last time?
Hello, Scott Kelly with AEW Architects for Shelby Township, Michigan. Also, I believe Alan Smith, who is with the Rochester Community House, is on the Zoom meeting.
Hey, Alan.
Hey, there.
How are you?
I'm good, thanks.
Good, good. Anything to add?
We brought today samples of the materials we're using, kind of blows up from what the renderings showed, and my apologies for not having more physical samples, but because of the pandemic, we're having difficulty getting them at this time in a timely manner.
Did everyone see those well enough?
I can't now. The chair was in the way.
Can I move that for you?
It's good, I can see.
Are you redoing the entire roof then of the?
The entire roof would be new, as well as all the siding.
Okay, all the way around.
Not only on the new addition, but on the existing building. The existing siding is wood, natural wood siding. It's meant to create a kind of faux log cabin look.
Yes.
And the problem with that is it leaks quite badly in several areas. It is currently leaking, so we need to get all that off and replace it with another product. So for ease of maintenance and durability, we've chosen vinyl siding with the horizontal lap siding in white for the majority of the building, and then accent on like the dormers and the peak areas to use a white battening siding that would do as a vertical siding, just to give a little contrast. Roofing materials, so Jason can put them down. Roofing tile is that color, which is a leathered wood quote, look, three-dimensional architectural shingle tile, or, excuse me, single roof. And also for the stonework that will be on the wainscot for the chimney is a stone product. Yeah, that's, is a stone product that we're going to use. That is to match the existing chimney and the character of the existing building.
I like that. Then you said the stone from the existing fireplace you're going to use in the landscape?
We're going to reuse the landscape area. Currently, that chimney, we can't have a fire there. It's not up to code, to the current codes, and it's not structurally sound. My understanding is when they had a fire there the last time, smoke started coming out of the crack of the motor joints.
We don't want that.
So we want to tear it down, salvage the stone, and then rebuild it with the stone that you see there, so it kind of meets the same look as it has.
This was an accent banner, right?
That is, the accent banner will go over the top of the stone, between the stone and the siding. Only to give the siding someplace to butt up to, that's nice and smooth surface, so we can seal it. One of the biggest issues, and one of the things we're definitely looking here, is to make the building weather tight. It does have several leaks in a lot of areas, so we're just trying to make sure that it's low maintenance, they don't have to paint it every couple of years, and they can, cleaning is just hosing it off, basically. So a couple other materials I'd like to mention are for the walkways in the rear of the building, which is the west side. Exposed aggregate concrete will be used for those concrete patios. For the upper patio outside of the main event space will be a combination, it'll be a patio, which will be stamped concrete and kind of a tile pattern that will be fully ADA accessible, and then that will transition to wood-finished Trex decking. We're using Trex again for ease of maintenance, and right now, cost actually, because actual wood decking is extremely expensive currently.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the architectural features?
Is this wood on the gable? The, see the wood on the gable? Yeah. Is that a, what type of material is that, real?
The truss?
Truss, yeah.
The truss, it would be a faux, it's not actually, it's a faux truss. It will actually be the Trex material.
Okay.
And that, the brown wood pattern here?
Lots of faux, right?
Will be.
Faux mink.
Right now, with the, with the price of wood, normally that would be something we might consider doing out of real timber.
Right.
Right now, the price of wood is just out of budget. It's sky high. It would be $20,000 truss.
Oh, that's easy maintenance, like you stated.
Alan, I don't know if you have anything to add?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear it.
Anything to add, Alan?
Yeah, one point regarding irrigation, that was the first thing that Lydia brought up. We had a sponsor two years ago paid a donor that paid for a drip feed all the way around the building, so it's all in place. So any, anything that we do from now on, it'll be relatively easy just to make sure that it's taken care of. And with the new 20-year agreement that we have with the city, we are responsible for maintaining the landscaping, of which we've already done all the current landscaping at the front of the building. That was all done by donations and landscapers at no charge.
The lawn around you is covered by the city?
All the grass, that is the Parks Department. They maintain that for us. If there's anything that needs doing, minor trimming, weed whacking, things like that, we'll, we take care of it. It's in our interest to do so for the appearance for the clients. And one of the big things in doing the boulder landscaping at the rear, that takes care of the hillside at the back of the building, which is quite ugly and very difficult to maintain, and so it will, you know, from our standpoint, the rear of the building is going to look 100% better than it does now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for either of these gentlemen? Okay. This is scheduled for a public hearing tonight, and to make it official, I'm going to declare the public hearing open at 8:38, and I'm going to ask Vidya and Nick if you have any other information to add, anyone waiting to speak to us, any other written communications? Nick, I assume you'll memorialize the commitment that you made on behalf of that one property owner for us?
Can you do that?
Okay, thank you. Ma'am, did you have anything to say?
I don't remember receiving anything about the wall. I did talk to Amy Schultz.
Come on up to the mic just for a minute.
Oh, sure.
Just give me, just give us your name and address.
Oh, it's 726 North Wilcox, and my name is Karen Tealy.
Okay.
You mentioned, I did see the letter regarding the public hearing, but don't, no, other than talking to Amy Schultz, don't know about the wall, so I'm not sure all the residents are aware of the plan for a wall or arborvitae.
There is no plan for a wall. Our proposal is to not require one either. The ordinance would allow it unless we waive it. Most people that have spoken have said they know that's the last thing they want. They love the open space and always have, and so if that's what you're coming to speak about?
No, I just was curious about what the changes to a historical building, what it would look like, what the expansion was. I think it's beautiful.
Yeah, it's really beautiful.
I don't know, you know, in terms of what your operating costs are or your revenue that you generate from.
That's all very public, and either of these gentlemen would be glad to speak to you at any time of it.
Okay, or can you even actually look at a budget or something like that? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it very much.
Thanks.
This is more for the commissioners, but I just want to give you a little bit about what I found. I love to look at the history of these things. It looks like Avon Township bought this park in 1935, and they used a Works Progress Administration grant during the Depression. And they got another grant in 1940, and they built what was called the Avon Park Pavilion. And that's actually the section that they're going to tear down. It included the stone fireplace. So it's been since 1940 that there's been structure here and no screening. That's the point of my whole thing here, and it's gone on very well since. So that, that original Works Progress building will now go away, having served the community well for, what, 80 years, I guess, and this incredible facility will come to replace it. But I think we've done our due diligence in terms of asking the abutting property owners their opinion and gotten some responses. So with that in mind, Siana, did you say you have anyone else waiting to speak?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. We'll declare the public hearing then closed at 8:41, and this will be back to the commissioners for consideration and any action. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we pass the site plan approval, and is it a special project?
Vidya, is it a special?
Special exception.
Yes.
Special exception.
Site plan approval and special project as recommended by the, by Vidya.
Good enough, Vidya?
If I may just correct it, special exception, not a special project?
Special exception, thank you.
Okay, so site plan approval and special exception approval.
Yeah, it is special exception. Site plan is special exception. That works fine. Thank you.
Do you need to add the creating the landscape berm?
You want to put those?
On the south property?
Yeah, you know, it's funny, because I, yes, thank you for that.
Plus the agreement that Nick struck with the one, the one property owner. We will add that.
It's funny, because the last time I brought up that we needed to make sure that these are done, but because it's the city, I feel like we'll make sure it's, we'll make sure it's done.
Says the mayor. So we have a motion, and do we have support? Supported by Ms. Clark Martin. Any other discussion?
Can I make a recommendation?
Please.
I stand here, the landscape plan, the deer love those arborvitae, but if you pick this, that's Duya Occidentalis, the emerald green, but if you get the placata, Duya placata, they are more deer resistant, so it might be a better choice.
Nick, you got that?
I was going to say that, but I'm glad you did.
It's right from our landscape architect.
Yeah, we might even use blue junipers. We'll look at our evergreen screen, if she's 100% red.
They get mushed.
Thank you, Patty. Appreciate that very much.
Yeah, I was just, quick comment. Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment. I just want to thank Alan and his team for all the hard work they've done. I know it's been a three-year process, and it looks like it's going to come to fruition. They're going to, assuming we vote on it, it's going to literally start construction as soon as they can, the budget's approved. So just congratulations to everybody involved, and I think it's, it's a site that's, you know, a jewel of the city. It needed a lot of work, it needed to be redone, and it's getting done, so I think it's all, it's a great project for the city.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And one final thing, and I know I said this last time, I do work with Alan Smith on fundraising for the inside. I just want to be transparent, it has nothing to do with the exterior.
Are you any good at it?
We're going to find out next week.
I have a job.
Thank you for pointing that out, Chris. Could we have the roll call, please?
Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioners Clark Martin?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
And King?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good luck to you on your project, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you, folks. Please do, Jim.
Now we got rid of the easy stuff.
The lights flickered.
The lights are flickering.
Yeah. Talk fast.
Okay. Consideration 6A, consideration of the review of the master plan draft and recommendation to city council. Oh, no. Okay, five-minute recess.
All right.
So we did have a blip.
Welcome if you got it. Eisenhower, right?
Yeah.
Where did I just see that? Smoke of?
What's that?
I just saw something on Eisenhower like that.
All right, item 6, consideration of review of the master plan draft and recommendation to city council. And Michelle Bennett, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you, and we can see you.
Okay. Fantastic. Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm going to share my screen here just to go over a few of the highlights of the master Let me know if this is coming across.
Yes, it is.
Okay, fantastic. So my name's Michelle Bennett, and I have been working with the city and several subcommittees for about a year now on the master plan. And for any of the new commissioners, I did just want to explain briefly that this is a long-term policy document, so we are looking far, farther into our future than most plans. This is our most comprehensive in terms of what we cover and also with the time horizon. So this is a plan that is the basis for zoning, and zoning is our most powerful land-use tool. So this is an important document that by the state statute is held by the planning commission. So you all are in charge of, you're the authors of it, you're also in charge of enforcing it. The good news is, is that the city of Rochester has maintained this up to date. So the last one was written in 2014, and every five years or so, you are required to review it and see if it needs to be updated. So we went ahead and started doing that, I believe in the summer of 2020. So I just wanted to say that because it's up to date, the majority of this plan is the same, and that's because there hasn't been massive shifts in the last five years. It's just been a process of really refining the content. So I have a slide here to show you what the highlights were. The 2020 census data is out. It's, it's still coming out slowly, so there could be a few more updates, but we have updated the data with 2020 census data. We re-helded some sort of visioning sessions and engagement with the public. But we have updated the data with 2020 census data. We re-helded some sort of visioning sessions and engagement with the public. In addition to the timing with the city survey that goes out every few years, we were able to incorporate those results into the master plan as well. So we've updated the vision statements based on our engagement with the public. We took the sustainability framework, much of what you were talking about this evening, I believe, and we put that into the master plan so that it holds more statutory weight and that it'll be a part of your decision-making and now aligns with your most comprehensive document. We also looked into parking. We had subconsultants, our parking expert, Walker, who reviewed the parking situation in the city. And then lastly, the last two items were really based on implementation. So we have an action strategy matrix, which says what your actions are, who will be doing them, and by what date or what year. And then we did a pretty thorough look at your future land use categories and updated the map so that we have some guidance for how to develop what's left in Rochester. So I wanted to make clear what tonight is. First, we have a project website, which you can go to when the draft is ready. It will be uploaded there for the public. We do have a state mandated process that we have to follow, and that's, tonight is really the first step, is that the planning commission recommends to council that they open the master plan up for 63 days. So that 63-day review period is mandated by the state so that the public has time to review the document and send comments. So they can send comments to the website, which will come directly to me, or they can come in person and go to Siana, who will relay them back to me. And then at the end of that 63-day review period, the planning commission will hold a public hearing, and then they will recommend to council, and then this will go to council in January of next year. So I will be happy to answer any questions you may have about the content of the plan or this adoption process.
Patty?
I have a question. First of all, the slide that you're showing us, will that be available for us? Because, you know, in reading through this, you know, we'd want to, it would just help to highlight what changed.
Process?
Because I was trying to reference, this is, first of all, very well done. It's easy to read.
Thank you.
So I was trying to reference, you know, our previous one as I was referencing this to see what changed. So it's been a little bit longer process. So this leads to my next question. Is this something that we, because we received this last week?
A week. You would have gotten it Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, yeah, received it, you know, later last week. Do we have any more time that we could at least review this and maybe put this on the docket for the 23rd? That's my question to you.
There's two options there. That is one option. But secondly, like I said, if you recommend to council, and then at their next meeting, they'll be opening it up to 63 days. So you do have two months and the meetings within those two months to also look over the master plan. And I'd be happy to come in person and maybe walk you guys through a bit more of the changes that were made.
If I may interject, so Patty, the purpose of this meeting right now is just to open a 63-day review period. So it's not as though we're adopting anything. So the same way that you guys, the public will have the chance to go through the entire document, you guys will have a chance to go through the document. So at each subsequent meeting, planning commission, council meeting, if you have any questions about anything, you can address it at that time. This is strictly just to open and pass it along to city council so they can open a 63-day review period.
Mr. Mayor, we were talking about this before the meeting, Patty and I in particular. This is overwhelming. It's a wonderful document. But five days is not enough time to absorb it. And we don't want to push something down to city council until it's the appropriate time. So we really feel as a commission that, you know, we looked it over and evaluated it, and we're giving you something worthy of your consideration. We don't want to find errors or mistakes later on that we should have done.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, I talked to the mayor pro temp today, and we were talking about this very subject. And, you know, we were a little unclear, yeah, were we supposed to vote on this tonight? And I guess, you know, when I talked to the city manager, he said, well, this, really, you're just like almost accepting this and moving it forward. But as you say, it's hard to have read all this.
Yeah.
And I.
Mayor Bixson, I'm sorry. I think there is a, I guess, a miscommunication, misunderstanding. The entire review period is for this document to be reviewed. If you guys see any changes, if you guys want anything changed, that is the purpose of the review period. It is not for you right now or a week ago to instep this document and adopt it. This is strictly to review the entire document over the course of the 63 days.
So it's a kickoff to get it in the hands of other people.
Correct. But then.
I need to put it in the hands of other people?
Well, that's the question is, are we like de facto saying it's okay by us putting it out in public?
No, this is strictly so everyone can review it. The public, the different, the other different parties, every single person will be reviewing it within the 63 days.
Right, then that was my understanding, but that still makes me a little uncomfortable.
Should the planning commission then schedule further review of this, even though we're exposing it to the city council? Should we continue our review of this plan as we have time at our next meetings? I guess, Michelle, that's.
Yes, that's exactly right. So you would be, your action tonight would be recommending to council that they open it for 63 days. And then for your subsequent meetings during those two months would be the times where you, as a group, review this and send any questions, modifications, suggestions to me so that this can be reviewed and updated during this period.
Okay. Do you have a document, Michelle, that summarizes the changes that you've made?
I can provide that for you your next meeting.
You can bring it at the next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, my understanding too is, you know, you're making these recommendations, and we're looking at this, and you're looking at the census data and the current trends and the interviews and things. But as far as looking at different things about how we're, you know, how we are utilizing some of our natural amenities and recommendations for that, at least right now, but again, it's a preliminary review. I've only, I read through it a couple of times. But I didn't see like a creative recommendation or how we can make a significant impact. And I guess maybe I was expecting a little bit more of that, a little more design review, or also looking at our DDA area, our utilization of some of our lost spaces and how we can capture that and integrate it. And I don't know how much of that was captured in your surveys.
So the DDA has their own separate plan, and we have met with them, and they have reviewed this. So we've incorporated what's appropriate in a master plan, which would be a higher level overview. They have their own separate plan that is, you know, their action plan has to be followed by state law. So they have budgeted according to that. But we have sat with the DDA and discussed this. But I suppose I didn't understand the first part of your question. You were looking for more strategies regarding natural amenities?
Well, we have, I mean, we have the Clinton River, and we have a lot of property that's down there, and we've got these industrial areas. And so I was, I guess I was just looking for more detail of those areas.
Okay. There are several action items geared towards the river and protecting natural features. If you remember at the beginning, I mentioned that we took the sustainability framework and incorporated that into this plan. So there are a lot of actions around that, and there is discussion about, you know, industry and over time, how manufacturing has been on the decline and that we are going to need new strategies for what to do with that land. It's a little possibly too early to say, which is why we update every five years. But we did make note of that, if I'm understanding correctly what your concern is.
Yeah, and I guess I was thinking there'd be more strategy lined out. But again, you know, this, it's just preliminary reviewing this. So, you know, it's a lot to take in, you know, in a couple of days.
So, Michelle, as best you can, by the next meeting, a summary of what's changed and what new, you know, is proposed would be very helpful for us to get our arms around it.
Okay.
Is next meeting September 23rd, or is it?
Yeah. Is that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just had a couple of other things.
Go right ahead.
And again, and Siona and I understand the process. We're just opening up this 60-day, 63-day thing. On page 33, 34, 35, where they show the Lettica Corner, the Woodward Avenue, the Mill Street, you know, we talked about that. You know, I'm uncomfortable sending this out to the public because that's private property. And I know it's hypothetical and theoretical, but if I was the owner of one of these properties, I might not, I might not really care for that. You know, they might, they may or they may not, but I mean, I think, you know, I don't think that's appropriate. And then I guess some of the things, you know, the recommended changes to the zoning ordinance, I mean, there's a few of those that.
Those are the things that I want to see called out.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't support some of those. So I mean, those are, you know, that's my personal opinion. But I mean, so those are.
I agree, and that's why I think this group has to discuss that. I don't want to be Johnny Come Lately with the council.
Right, or is it?
You should have pointed that out.
Or is the planning commission passing it, the city councils then passes it just to open it up?
Right.
And is that, that's what?
With no assumption that we've approved it, just that.
We're supposed to have written this, like, right? I mean, this is, like, we take ownership of this.
We kind of do through the consultant.
Through the consultant. So we have to have some time to absorb this and understand what the consultant is on.
So things like, new things, like the natural features things, there are sustainability criteria put in. They're all very good things. But I don't think we have a grasp of them yet, Michelle. That's what, that's what we're trying to get our arms around. And we're pretty quick learners, but.
Right.
But so the. We need black and white put in front of us.
Right. So I guess the question, and maybe the question is to Nick, because, or in Siona, because Blaine's not here. He's on vacation. Is there something that we have to have this, you know, vote on it today and the city council on Monday? Because I mean, we're planning on having it on the agenda at the city council meeting Monday. But I mean, is there?
I know from reading the act, Michelle, you correct me with this, but there's certain, you have a plan that you have to follow by law in terms of adopting this. There are a lot of hoops we have to jump through. And I guess what you're saying is that tonight's the kickoff. In order to get this out in front of other people.
That was the intention.
Yeah. So it doesn't mean it's final by any means.
Right, right, but.
No, 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 no. It's not final until you hold a public hearing, and that would be at least after 63 days. And then it would go to council again. So like I'm saying, we're, the task tonight was.
Is to start.
The intention was just to start the review process.
Both the planning commission and the city council are going to have to do a lot of discussing about the draft in the next 63 days.
Right, and I, and I think this underscores that there's, and again, when I was talking to the mayor pro temp, this, people don't understand what's going on.
They don't understand.
That's the problem.
And we'll get there, but.
Yeah, so that's.
But we need to be coached along.
Right, I mean, I think, you know, I think the city council will have the same thing. They'll think like you thought, oh, we're going to have to make decisions. You know, I've only had it for a week. Well, no, it's to start the process.
Yeah. I mean, my concern, though, is, like I said, we need to absorb this. Like with any project, right? It's like, okay, when is it time to present? You know, you go over iterations, right? And if this goes to the public, are we ready for the public to look at this and say, oh, I like this, I don't like this, and to comment it? Are we ready for that?
So I guess.
We received this from the consultant.
Maybe Nick can.
Nick, any input for us? You've been, you've been through this a dozen times.
I totally understand the concern. It's a double-edged sword. So because of the law, in the 63 days, I can understand where the mayor and Patty mostly are coming at to say, hey, if we're not comfortable with this, and then somebody gets it and they say, what the heck are you guys thinking if it was that wrong? But we had study group after study group, and it's hard because it's the planning commission stamp that starts this and then has the public hearing. But it's been vetted a lot through Michelle's group to get to this point. And if we put, it says draft master plan on it, it says we're looking for comments for 63 days, including the planning commission and city council. If we make that very clear in our correspondence that we're not rubber stampings, we're not asking you to do that. We are merely following the sequences that we need to keep us on track for January end date, I think we would be okay. And I, we just have to make sure we're very clear that we're not endorsing it as it is. There are things you might want to put in or take out as the mayor said, some things he's not comfortable with. We can decide that as a group moving forward. But the longer we wait to get the 63 days going from the outside agencies and the public, we're just going to be spinning a wheel here. We are kind of chastised for not moving this along. So we're trying to get to a date where we can see it done within a year, not wait four or five years like we did last time. So I get it. I don't, I think we could have, every single plank, we can talk about details and update that and pass it on the website, communicate it to the outside folks that we've made some amendments. But I do understand the concern. At some point, you have to kind of, you know.
Is the, is the January completion date arbitrarily selected? I think we're backing into it. We're backing into the need for tonight's action in order to meet the January date.
That's correct.
Can that date slip?
I mean, yes, it's, I think Mr. Wing doesn't want to be chastised for flipping unnecessary.
I know you'd prefer it did not.
And I, I see both sides.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. We need the discipline of that date. I understand that to keep things moving along.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may ask to you, to Mr. Bennett, what is the prejudice to the city if we hold this off until the next meeting when all the commissioners are here? We can have an opportunity for us to go through this a little bit more detail. I mean, does a two-week extension put the city in a bad spot before we say yes, let's start the clock on the 63 days?
Or would you prefer we just got it out there, approve it, send it forward, get it out there, not approve it? Receive it.
I think that's what city, I think city administration wants to do that.
Try to stay on.
Yeah.
The target. Yeah.
And I can respect that. I'm just trying to think if it's two weeks to allow us to go this, to go into a little bit more detail and allow the other commissioners who might not be present an opportunity too to talk about this.
Are we expected to make any further decisions other than tonight?
No.
No.
Well, I mean, at the public hearing.
Yeah, but the planning commission's duty is completed by pushing it forward.
Correct, but we would have, we would have a public hearing in the, you know.
And a lot of opportunities.
In 60 days, the public, the planning commission has to have a public hearing, and then the city council have the final.
So there's time.
Right, and so in theory, if the planning commission had all kinds of issues, then it wouldn't.
Yeah, I don't, from understanding the process as I hear, I don't have a problem starting the clock today, knowing that we'll have the opportunity, more opportunities, plural, in the future to talk about this and review it.
I think we can make our motion very clear on that tonight, that this is not an approval. It's just a receive and move it on.
Start the clock.
Are you okay with that, Michelle?
Yes.
That's what they want. That's what they want.
Okay, does anyone, I mean, we're not going to beat this thing anymore tonight. Does anyone want to make a motion? Does anyone want to make a motion to receive this draft and forward it to the city council?
I will make a motion to receive this draft and to forward it to the city council.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by the mayor. So we have a motion and it has been supported, any further discussion? And could we have the roll call?
Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioners Clark Martin?
I'm a nay.
Howser?
Yes.
And King?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and supported and or approved, we'll send it on to city council. Thank you, Michelle, we'll see you at the next meeting.
Yes, thank you, have a good evening.
Okay, number seven miscellaneous, does anyone have anything miscellaneous?
I have a miscellaneous.
Go ahead, Sienna.
Hi, so I'd like to state that I did, we did hire a new minutes checker, Amanda Courtney, she's on the line, she's been calling Rose, so I just wanted to introduce Courtney to the planning commission team.
Welcome, Courtney, we wondered who that strange person was, and anything we can help you with, you let us know. Welcome aboard.
Great, thank you, I'm excited to help you guys out.
Okay.
Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Just a quick note, the vote on the master plan, there are only five members present out of a nine-member board? You needed all five yes votes to pass, you had only four yes votes. I don't think you moved...
Oh, then it didn't pass?
No.
No, the motion did not pass.
Thank you, Vidia, I should have caught that.
Yeah, you had only four out of nine members vote yes, so the motion actually failed.
Okay, so we will review it again in September, late September, 23rd.
Right.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a miscellaneous.
Yes.
Just very quickly, is it possible at the next meeting or the meeting thereafter to get an update on the status of the building, where the recipes is located, the renovations that are being done?
Maybe Nick.
Nick, this came up before the meeting was convened. People were wondering about the progress on a variety of subjects or projects, and the one tonight mentioned was recipes, which appears, at least from the outside, to be stalled.
Uh, no, I can give you a great update, actually, actually, it's moving at work speed, so they've got inside to finish, they're, they already have releasing activity going on. It's very beautiful, the building official, the fire marshal, everybody's ecstatic about quality of the workmanship, but what you don't see going on is on the inside. So they're trying to get occupancy by the end of this year, and that's it. So that it's moving ahead very well, and we're pleased with the progress.
Does the doctor have a project manager who's handling this for him?
He does, he does, and architects from Yamasaki, he's the project manager, and he's been staying, he's got good contractors, the work's been done properly, fire, the fire system's all been done appropriately, reviewed by us, and they have a good quality contractor, so our team is very happy with the progress.
Okay, thank you. We would always look forward to a general update report, and I'm not putting you on the spot to do it now, but maybe next time.
Yeah, I can give you one more that you should be having about the Glendale-Ferndale we got through our engineering problems, if you look there, today the underground is just about all done, big piles of dirt that are going in for the the tanks, so that is moving quickly, and we're happy about that also. I'll give you other ones as it comes to me.
The underground is done, I think I heard you say, and so we should see some action pretty soon.
Yep, they're, they have all the contractors lined up, so we're getting ready to go update.
Very good, thank you. Sienna, any other public comment, anyone waiting to speak to us?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Number nine, upcoming agenda items for September 23rd.
Yes, so we have two ordinance amendment considerations, one for the vent standard and the light and illumination of the ordinance amendment.
And now we can add consideration of par.
We can add par and the master plan.
And the master plan, very good. Patty, you're here to make decisions, don't feel bad about that.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't.
Absolutely did not feel bad about that, that's why we're here. So, okay, any other items for the good of the order? I don't think there is. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good luck, Sarah. Hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.